And and everything after this will be will be posted. So yeah, so let's start with the let's start. I have so many tabs open. Let me close a couple of these tabs here. Doesn't want me to close it. There we go. So. And also tomorrow I'll be doing an eight three eight tutorial if anybody is in two eight three eight, which I'm assuming some people are. Which I know some people are. And so I'll be doing that tomorrow also at six o'clock. Okay, so let me go to let me get the sample. What do you guys think is the hardest part of the sample? Like of the like what section? We'll do all of it because it's not gonna take us more than an hour to do the sample. But. Yeah, what do you think the hardest part is?
I guess the sequel code and like the XML that's probably gonna be the hardest part.
Yeah. I would agree.
Because the thing is, the sequel code is like linear algebra. So I guess linear algebra is the hard part.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So. Okay, so let's just start. Let's just go in order. Explain the following things and then let's just try to define it. We may might want to look through the notes as well to find some other things that could be asked here, but anyways. Explain whatever. Transitive dependency is when there is a functional dependency between. Three attributes. A, B, and C. Where? A gives. A gives. B. And separately, B gives. C. Therefore. Uh, A gives. See? And if anybody has anything to add, please just jump in or say in the chat. I am recording, yes. Uh, let's make sure your voice, your guys' voices are in the thing. It is, yeah. So next one, again, anybody stop me if you have a question or you wanna? Or you want to add to my answers here? Partition tolerance in NoSQL databases. So partition tolerance is like from that big diagram. Oh, I guess I should have mentioned like my notes are available to, right? You can see find my notes at www dot two tor dot ca slash notes. And then you can see my uh, you can see my notes for this course. I'll just open them here. Um, I think I have them open. No, this is eight three eight. So um, partition tolerance is one of those like three components of like three. Uh, elements. There it is. Nope, not here. Three elements of a of a database. I don't know if elements the right word, but. Three qualities of a database. Where is it? Uh, there it is, right? This diagram, right? So we have consistency, which means I think I defined it over here somewhere. Oh, there. Every read receives the most recent write or an error, right? So basically consistency means every read gets the most recent right. So it's not like some databases have different different things. Um, availability is that you always whenever you try to whenever someone tries to read, they can read without any additional delay. Um, and then partition tolerance is basically like the network will partition the. I don't know if I fully understand partition tolerance. I think the the network will partition the data across many servers. And if one of those servers goes offline, then the whole system still works. It's not like you just lose one server and the whole system stops working. It's like it's it's tolerant to partition fails. So like certain partitions of the data set failing. That's my understanding and that would be what I would write. I'd say like, um, you know, the uh, NoSQL. NoSQL uh. Database partitions, all the data into um, various servers. Um, servers. Partition, you know, uh. A. If one of those. Servers goes. Offline, a you know, database with. Partition tolerance. So will, you know, continue. Continue to operate. Yeah, that's what I that's what I would say. If anybody has anything to add, you know, great. But yeah, that's. That's what I would say. And that's a kind of our system continues to operate despite arbitrary partitioning due to network failures. I mean, I got this information just from like online. She doesn't really explain it that much in the slides. It's kind of just like consistency and availability. She can explains in the slides, but then partition tolerance. It's like, oh, yeah, that's another thing that's there. Doesn't really explain it. But yeah, so MongoDB, which is like obviously the popular database system is a NoSQL database system is like a. Consistent and has partition tolerance, but not necessarily always available. But yeah, okay, so that's that question. Then graph databases. Let's try to put this into nice words here. And as always, you know, stop me if you have a question or you want to add anything. So graph databases, I mean, this is just basically where it's like it's a it's a type of NoSQL. NoSQL database that um, organizes. So you know, information in the form of, you know, a a discrete graph or like a combinatorial graph is what it's called. But like in the form of, you know, edges and nodes. Edges, nodes. The the nodes repre- represent represent entities. And the edges represent uh, relations between those. That's what I would say. I don't know if anybody has any anything to add to that. That's that's basically what a discrete graph is. Master slave replication. So master slave replication is a type of like a like a consistency, I guess, or something like that over. It's just like different ways that the data is like like redundancy, I guess, is the word, right? Between. To ensure that we have like the correct information, right? So I I think I have it here somewhere in my notes. Why don't I search it? Master there, master slave replication. Each node in the cluster needs to communicate with one server, the master, which accepts all rights. The master is a single point of failure. The slave, if the slave servers have not heard from the master. They may assume it has failed and will elect a new master from among them. Them. Let me fix that. From among them. It's not letting me get it. From among them. According to some algorithm. We didn't talk about what algorithm that is. But anyways, that's that's the idea. That's that's the structure, right? So master slave replication, but like the purpose, the purpose of this kind of replication. Is uh, to kind of like, I guess, have redundant some redundancy here and to like scale the server. Up upwards, right? So like you have more space, so the the no, but I but if it's copying. If it's replicating, then it's not really you're you're not really getting more space. You're kind of just have some redundancy. So I think that's the purpose, but we can describe describe how it works. It's basically like. Um, a single. Server is chosen to be the master. Which accepts. All right requests. This master server will uh, replicate the rights to all. Slave servers which, you know. Which are associated with it. Um, and then we can say like if the ma- you know, if the master, you know, goes away, then. They'll elect a new one, but that's essentially the idea. Right? So a single service showing be the master which accepts all right requests. This master server will replicate the rights to all slave servers which are associated with it. And that's all.
A quick question. Is this still being recorded?
Yeah, I'm recording.
Okay.
All good?
Uh, thanks. It's just I don't really see a red button or.
Yeah, I record like locally. I don't record on Zoom. I record like locally on my computer. And then I'll post it on YouTube after.
Okay, cool.
So question two. So then here. So within the context of database normalization, there is a rule called pseudo-transitivity, which is expressed as follows. If A gives B, B C gives D, then A C gives D. Which is like basically transitive, but it's not exactly transitive. It's not like directly. A gives D, right? We can't exactly say like if it was tran- like just transitive would be like A gives D. But that's not entirely true because you still need C as a little ingredient here. So it's pseudo-transitivity. Based on the functional dependency rules that you've learned in class this term, how pseudo show how pseudo-transitivity can be derived? Like just as a as a general rule like that, if you know, if we assume. Assume that A gives B. And. B C gives D. Then we need to show then show, right, that A C. Gives D. Well. You know. If you know, it first comes from the fact that if A gives B, right? So okay, if if this is like the key set that we have, right, that we have, we have A. So it says using the rules learnt in class, it's very general, right? That doesn't really mean something specific. I mean, we can we can just write out a couple of rules that are helpful here, right? Like for example, if you know, A gives B, or let's say. A gives B C. Um, implies that A gives B. And A gives C, like that's one rule that we have. Then if we have um. Then uh, yeah, what else, what else? We have like the transitive rule, obviously, but that's not super helpful. Then um. Well, then we have the transitive rule, which I I guess, yeah, which I guess I'll write like A gives B. And B gives C. Imploys A gives C, which is is gonna be helpful here, right? So that we know that A gives B. Uh, is is a a fact that we have. I guess I'll switch colors here, right? Is a fact that we have. How about I maybe box this? Just a cup, just like two rules. I don't know if we're gonna use these rules, but these are just rules that could be asked, right? Could be asked about. So if we know. Let's say we have. A. And. A gives B. Therefore. We have B. Have is not the right word, but that's how I'm gonna phrase it, right? So we have A, right? We're showing A gives B and we're we want to show A C, right? So we have A and we have C. We have A. And A gives B, so we have B, okay? We have C. And. B now, right? And. B C gives uh. What was it? B C gives D? Uh, yeah, B C gives D. B gives D. Therefore, we have D. And that's what we're trying to show, right? So we have. We started with A and C and we showed that we ended up getting D. So therefore. A C gives D. We're kind of just saying the same thing over and over again here, right? Like this is how she did it in the class too, though. It's like it's not, this is pretty much her solution. Um, may as well have her solution open too. It's not like it's not much to prove here, right? It's kind of evident that if we have A B, if if A gives B, then essentially A and B are the same thing, right? If we have A, then we have B. So then if we have A, then we definitely have B. If you have C, then A C will give. Saying a lot of things, but hopefully looking at the the drawings here make makes sense. That's what you want to really focus on. Um, we can look at the this mess of a PDF. Did she say anything for these ones? No, just that, okay. Yeah, so that this is all she wrote, right? So A gives B. A C gives B C. B C gives D, therefore A C gives D. Oh, yeah, I guess that actually makes sense. This this is kind of a, this is actually kind of a an important step here. To say A gives B, therefore A C gives B C. That that is the same thing. I mean, am I saying the same thing here? Yeah, I mean. Essentially, right? I'm saying A C, this rule and this combined, A C gives B C. But yeah, maybe another way of saying this is just that A C, I mean, A. Gives B. Therefore, A C. Gives B C. B C gives D. Therefore, A C gives D. And there we go. That's maybe a cleaner proof here. Of that. But I like I like writing words because I feel like it's more better to communicate with words, but. There is no, we you know, this is not a proofs class, so. Any way that you show some legal rules that end up with A C giving D. You definitely have to use transitive here because it's basically transitive. But a little bit different. There we go. Anyone has any questions, feel free to jump in, but yeah, that's a. That's pretty much that question. So the next question is question three, which is all this stuff, B C and F. Two and F, all that kind of stuff, right? So I'm gonna have to take a second to remember what the what the different forms are. Let let's take a second and review that together maybe before we. Before we even start, right? All the different the different forms. So uh, the forms, I'll have to look at my notes, but let's just start maybe with from memory. So UNF is just like, everything is like, I don't even remember. It's just like everything's in a table, I think. It's like the most basic form. Okay, I have to look at my notes right away. I forget what UNF is. It's like un-normalized form or something like that. Where are we here? There are no duplicate rows. Every table has a primary key. So the first, so um. No. Duplicate rows. Every table. Has valid. I'll just say PK, primary key. That's UNF. So first normal form. Is uh, everything, without looking at my notes, everything has to be atomic. So there's no multi-valued attributes, right? And now I'm looking at my notes. Uh, that the domain of each attribute contains only atomic values. That's it. Yeah, so you must have. Okay, so only. Atomic. Values. Atomic meaning like there's this, you can't break them down further. It doesn't make any sense to break them down further, right? No multi-valued. Um, attributes. Okay, so that's first normal form. Second normal form. Okay, so this is where we have to, we only allow, so. Basically, like the the. There are no dependencies between a. Key attribute and a non-key attribute unless that key attribute is the chosen key, like is the primary key. So you can't have like a part of the key. I'm not saying the right words, the part of the primary key. There is no non-key attribute. Of any candidate key of the table. So there is no non-key attribute. So this is this is basically what we're saying. So non-key attribute. That comes from a. Uh, subset. Of candidate, of of yeah, of of a candidate key. That not allowed in two and F. Into F, right? So this is basically saying that like our candidate key is the is minimal essentially for every non-key attribute. That like we can't just like take something out and still be able to determine some of the non-key attributes. It has to be like the smallest one. For two. Um, so so how would you check this? Well, you'd probably you'd probably find, you know, probably probably first you'd find all. Candidate keys. And then, you know, to che- check if this happens, see if 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 bad condition happens. But you probably find all candidate keys first. Uh, I think that's all for two and F. And and you might want to, I guess, to get things into two and F, you might break things into multiple tables, right? So you know, to maybe to fix. Fix by, you know, breaking. Into. Separate. Separat. Tables. This is fixed by, uh, also you could break it into separate tables. And this is, you know, just fixed by. You don't really fix that. Everything's UNF. We definitely assume everything's UNF. Because otherwise it's like not a valid database, really. Okay, so then three NF. Okay, so for three NF, there are, you know, no transitive. Dependencies. Unless. It loops back. To a candidate key. Okay, no transitive dependencies unless it loops back to a candidate key. I have fairly certain. Let me verify with my notes here. All columns would be fully on the primary key. All columns must be functionally dependent on the back key. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that seems that's seems to. Ver- you know, mesh well with my notes and and what the solution was, like for this for the for the following question. So A gives B and B gives C, you know, I'll highlight the key attributes. So the key attributes are A and C. This is okay. Right, this is, I guess I'll put in, I'll put highlighting green. This is okay. Okay, for three NF. Right? Um, all other transitive dependencies should be completely separate. If it's going A, B to a non-key attribute. Then that's not okay for three. So then I'll I'll do that here. So I'll I'll say. Key attribute. And remember, key attribute is just a an attribute that is part of any candidate key. So let's just say here I have. A key attribute. Key attribute and I'll highlight that in blue. And that's the key attributes. And then the following is not okay for. Three and F. You know, if I have A gives B, B gives, say D, just to make it different, right? Not okay. For three NF. Where, you know, notably, th- this is a key attribute. So that's three NF and then let's look at B C and F. B C and F is. B C and F is, uh, there are no transitive. Dependencies. At all, really. I think. You know, it's phrased differently. Every. Determinant. Determinant is the thing on the left of the arrow. Every determinant. Is. Uh, candidate key. Candid key. Maybe so I'll just say AKA. Every determines is a candidate key. So essentially, that's not okay anymore. Right? So. I'll copy this. And I'll put this here. And I'll change the color to red and I'll say. Not okay. Not okay. For B C and F. And to fix it, you split into more tables, right? So so we can maybe look at the example to to see this happening, but. That's the idea. Okay, so again, anybody can stop me if you have any questions, but let's start answering this one. So we have a. A relational schema S, A, B, C, D, and the following functional dependencies on S. So A gives B C D. B gives C. D, uh, C D gives A. And that's it. So let's always just like find the candidate keys. Like this is just always a good way to start, right? So candidate key one, well, we need to figure out what determines everything else, right? So if I know A, then I know B, C, and D. Well, that's the whole table, so. Looks like knowing A is enough, but let's see if there's another candidate key. There it is. So if I know, if I know, uh, let's just go through the letters. Let's just go through the single ones first. If I know B, then I know C. And if I know B and C, well, I can't go any further than that. So knowing B is not enough to determine everything else in the table. It's enough to determine C, but it's not enough to determine everything else. Okay, knowing C does do anything. Like just knowing C doesn't do anything. Knowing D also doesn't do anything for us. Okay, now knowing like a combination. Well, I wouldn't want to do a combination of A and something else because that's not a candidate key anymore. Because I could just remove that other thing and it'd still be a candidate key. So now I need to start combining like B C, C and D, or B and D. Right? Those, these are my other combinations here. You know, just to kind of list out all the combinations, all key. You know, all all possible keys, right? All possible. Keys. We have like A, B, C, D. We have, well, it can't be A B because that's not possible because A is already a, like as we said, A is already a key, right? So can't be A and B. Because if I said A B was it was our key, then I could just remove B and it it'd still be a key, so it's not. I guess I'll say all super keys. Whatever, I'll say all possible. Because I'm not really doing it super correctly, but. So it must be either B C. B D or C D. Or it could be B C D, right? It can't be anything with A because if it was something with A, I could just remove everything else except the A and it'd still be a key, so. It's not, not, not possible. Okay, so then we can just start looking here, right? So um, B C, right? If I know B C, well, if I know B, then I know C. And I'm stuck. It's the same thing as if I just knew B, right? So this is no good. This is no good. This was also no good. This was also, this was also. If I know B D, okay, so if I know B, then I know C. And if I know C, then I know, and and I also know D, then I know A. So if I know B, and I'm saying a lot of letters here, but if I know B and D, then I also know C and A. So there you go. B D is also a candidate key. Right? B D is also a candidate key here. B D is also a candidate key, but let's keep going. C D, right? Well, if I know C D, I know A. Ah, that's good because then if I know A, then I know B. If I know A, I know everything, right? So C D is also a a candidate key. So uh, I'm running out of room, but I'll maybe just put this. Maybe over here. And then I'll put this and and that's our last candidate key. How about I make these a little closer together? Uh, candidate key three is uh, uh, C D. Like that. Oops. C D, yeah. And then B C D, well, there's no way anymore, right? Because let's say B C D was, I mean, it is a key, it's a super key, but it's not minimal, right? Like I I can remove D, let's say, and I have, oh, no, I can't remove D, but I can remove C. And B D is still a a candidate key, so. It's no good either. And there we have it. So I'll just erase that, right? That's that's that. So there's our three candidate keys. So what are our key attributes? Well, A is a candidate key attribute, B is a key attribute, C is a key attribute, and D is a key attribute. They're all key attributes. Okay, so everything's a key attribute. There are no non-key attributes. So S is not B C and F. Let's try to understand why S is not B C and F. So um. There is a transitive dependency between a, like there is this happening, right? So there's this happening where A gives B, A is a candidate key. I guess I, you know, I I highlight, I didn't highlight the middle. I said B is not a candidate key, but it doesn't matter if if B is a candidate key or not. Yeah, it doesn't matter if B is a candidate key or not. Or or like is is a key attribute, right? So if it's a key attribute, it is in this case, doesn't really matter. Um, so A gives B, B gives C, this is a. Thing, right? We know A gives B from this, right? We know A gives B. Like this, this was one of the rules that I wrote here, right? A gives B C, A gives B, I give C. So we know A gives B. And we know B gives C. And there is a exactly what I was saying, there is a relation where transitively, the. Uh, A goes back to C. Uh, A goes back to C. Every determinant is a key, is a candidate key, not just a key attribute. That's, that's, that's important. Every determinant is a candidate key. B is not a candidate key. So that's really the problem. It's not really the transitivity. It's, it's this. Right? And. B is not a candidate key. This is fine though, right? Cause CD is a candidate key and A is, this is fine, cause A is a candidate key. But B gives C, B is not a candidate key, so that is not okay. Uh, and let's go through it, right? So S is not BCNF. Is it three NF? Well, let's just go through all the different lists, like is it all of them? So is it, you know, UNF, we're assuming. Is it one NF, we're assuming, right? Then is it two NF? One, UNF and one NF are like, can't really check that. We don't know the data. But then. Two NF, two NF requires that there is no. Key, there's no dependency between a part of a key. And a value. Um. So. Uh, I think it's not two enough, right? Oh no, it is. S is three enough. S is three. It's be a key attribute. There's, is it, it's not BCNF, but it's a three NF. You know, so we're gonna answer the sub-question here. Is it? It, so here, is it? BCNF? No, B is not a candidate. Is it, let's start back from the bottom now, is it two NF? Well, see what. She wrote in the, in the solution here, so. X gives Y. And this is part of. A candidate key and Y is not a candidate key. Right, so I, I think I wrote something up here for two NF? A subset of a candidate key gives a non-key attribute. Oh, gives a non-key attribute. There we go, right? So a subset, let's look at all our dependencies, right? A is not a subset of anything. Great. CD is not a subset of anything, like a proper subset, right? Not including itself, that's fine. B is a subset of a candidate key. But does it give a non-key attribute? No, it gives a key attribute. So, you know, you might think for a second, right? B gives C is also a problem. But this is okay. This, this. Is okay since. B is a key, is a subset. Since even though. Since even though B is a subset. Of a candidate key. It. Uh, it gives, uh, uh. C. Is a key. Attribute. Everything's a key attribute, right? So essentially, actually, yeah. If everything is a key attribute, it has to be two enough. If every element is a key attribute, then it has to be, let's check this. If every element in a relational table is a key element, does it have to be two enough? Let's see. Let's see. Okay, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I think that's, I, based on my research, that seems fine. To say that if they're all key attributes, then. It must be in two enough. So that's, I'm, you know, I don't have a proof for this, but, you know, say remark. If a table. Attributes. Are all. Key attributes. Then it must be. Two enough. Okay. Such as, eh, for example in this. Okay, so it's two enough. Or if you have to answer the question, is it three enough? Is. It three NF? So for three NF, we need, without looking at the notes, we need to check that there's no dependency. Between the, there's no transitive dependency between a key attribute. And a non-key attribute. But. There again are no non-key attributes. Right? No transit, transitive dependencies unless it loops back to a candidate key. So I guess I should be more clear if I mean candidate key here or, uh. Primary keys, or, 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 uh, candidate key or key attribute. Let me keep reading this here. Okay, so this happens when there is a non-key attribute that depends on. Another non-key attribute rather than directly on the candidate key. So. For each non-prime attribute, it is not part. Let's see the solution. The three NF part of the solution. So we have, you know, we have A. We have A gives B. A is a candidate key. CK. And B gives C. But C is also, uh, a, you know, primer, um, a key attribute. So I guess this is also a key attribute. So this is the only transitive dependency we have, right? Um, we have CD gives A again, right? But that doesn't, that doesn't matter. So for three NF, that's okay, as long as, as since they're both key attributes. There we go, that's it. Since they're both key, so it's just like you have to identify like the suspicious transitive dependencies. The dependencies, the dependencies that make it seem like there's some, gonna be some kind of problem. Just check them and make sure that, you know, for three NF, you have these. So it's not. BCNF because of this, right? You're like not allowed to have this, right? This is what we said. Not okay for BCNF. So for BCNF, you'd still split this into other tables. Okay, there you go. That's. That's my answer for part A, at least. Now, okay, you know, part B. Consider the decomposition of S into ABC and BCD. Is this valid decomposition into BCNF? Well, if it's in BCNF, then it must be in three NF, and if it's three enough, it must be in two enough, so. Let's check two NF. Two NF means there's no dependency on part of a candidate key. But anyways, we need to find the candidate keys of these smaller tables here now, right? Let me scroll back up here. Right? We need to find, yeah, we need to find the candidate keys. Whenever you're given a table, right? We should find the candidate key. So let's find the, you know, for S1. Candidate keys. Well, we have the same, same, um. Dependencies, right? B gives, A gives BCD. B gives C. And DC gives what? A? CD gives A. Doesn't matter, but CD gives A. So, um, in this table, right? Well, A still gives BC, so candidate key one is still A for that table. And then the other candidate keys were like CD and stuff like that, what, they both had D involved, right? D and D, but there's no, there's no D here anymore, right? So that's, that's the only, that's the only candidate key for this, for this table. And then for S2, the candidate key. And so in this table, B and C are non-key attributes. Non-key attributes. For the second table, we don't have A anymore, but B still gives C. Right? B gives C. So we might think just B, but B doesn't give D. Right? So if there's anything else we can do, well, we could try CD, but CD gives A, A's not even in this table. So the only answer is to say that B gives C and we just still need D. So we, we need to be given D. So BD, BD, there you go, is the other candidate key. So C is a non-key attribute, non-key attribute.
Um, can you explain, can you explain again why, uh, C is a non-key a- attribute again?
Of the, of, of this table, like of here?
Yeah.
Well, it's not part of any key, right? The only candidate key of the table is BD. Of S2, of this table S2. The only candidate key is BD. So it's not part of it, so it's not part of a, i- it's not a key attribute. Key attributes are attributes that are part of at least one candidate key of the table. Is that okay what I'm saying?
E, yeah.
So yeah, so it's, C is not part of any candidate key. It's the only candidate key, you know, we don't, we don't count these candidate keys anymore, right? Cause we're talking about a different table now. We're not talking about S, we're talking about S1, S2. New tables. New candidate keys. So is it a valid decomposition to BCNF? Well, okay, so it has to be, first of all, one NF, fine, it is. Two NF, two NF means that there is no dependency between a part of the candidate key and, uh, some other, uh, non-key attribute. Well, this has to be two enough, right? Because if there's only one, if there's only one primary key, then there, there's no subset. If there's only one candidate key, I mean, and there's only one thing in it, there's no subset, so this must be two enough. Only. No, no, no subsets. Well, no, you know, no proper subsets. No subsets of, um, CK. Uh, and then let's keep going up the list, right? Well, is it three NF? We have to ask you if it's three NF. So for three NF, let's go back to our list here for what, what these things mean. So for three NF, that would mean that it's okay if we have this going on, but it's not okay if we have this going on. Then, do we have that going on? Yeah, we do. So we have the not okay thing going on, right? We have A gives B. B gives C. Um, and we have it so that A is a candidate key, or, or at least it, it is a key attribute. And C is a non-key attribute, right? If we go back up to this definition for three NF. Right? So C is a non-key attribute. Uh, so, so I don't highlight it. C is a non-key attribute. So this is not okay in three NF. Say not okay. Not okay for. Three NF. So it's not three NF, therefore not BCNF. Okay, so then we don't really have to go further, like it's not a valid decomposition to BCNF because the S1 is not BCNF. Check this. Oh, she doesn't really elaborate. Oh no, she does elaborate. S1 is not get BCNF. S2 is also not BCNF apparently. Um, why? Oh, for the same reason, right? B gives C. B, um. Yeah, B isn't, uh, S2 isn't even two enough, I don't think, right? Because for two enough. You know, a subset of the candidate key, B, which is a subset of the candidate key, gives a non-key attribute C, right? So since, since B gives C. Red, I guess. B gives C. This is a subset. Of a candidate key. And this is a non-key attribute. Therefore not two enough. Therefore not BCNF. So not a valid decomposition, for sure. Then for C. Consider the decomposition of S into S3, ABD, and S4, BC. Is this a valid decomposition? Well, we do the same thing, right? We check for all our candidate keys and we check for, um. S1, S2, like, I, I. Two NF, three NF, and then BCNF. So for S3, the candidate keys, the first candidate key. Is, well, certainly A, right? A is always a candidate key. And then let's remember our, our. Functional dependencies. A gives BCD. B gives C and CD gives A. So the only dependencies here are A gives B, A gives D, that's it. There's nothing else to, there's nothing else, no dependencies in that, right? So A gives just everything else on the table. Great, so CK1 is just A and that's the only, that's the only one, right? So it's definitely two enough. And it's definitely three enough. Right? Three enough is for like transitive dependencies. We don't have any transitive dependencies. It's just A gives that and that's that. And it's definitely BCNF because again, there's no transitive dependencies. BCNF, right? There's just no transitive dependencies. So for all those things, cause transitive dependencies are, are what you check, right? S4, eh, the candidate key. Is, well, just B, right? Because. Key one, I guess. Is just B because B gives C. This is the most, this is like a function essentially we're implementing here, right? This is like, it's, you put B and you get a C, right? So it's, uh, it's definitely all of it, right? It's definitely two enough, uh, because you can't take a subset of the candidate key. It's definitely three enough because there's no transitive dependencies. And it's definitely BCNF because there are no transitive dependencies. If there were transitive dependencies, then it might, you know, it's not easy to say that, oh yeah, so then no, no, it's not, it's not like that. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying if there's no transitive dependencies, then there's no way for it to be, not be three enough. Cause that's, that's the test we would check. We're checking for transitive dependencies. And transitive dependencies kind of just like make a little bit of a mess of the table, right? They make a mess of the, the dependencies in there. So yes, it is. It is a valid BCNF decomposition. So assume the decomposition in part C is implemented and the user is allowed to enter data into tables S3 and S4. Is it guaranteed that all the initial functional dependencies on S? Will be respected in S3 and S4? And the answer for this is no, right? So a couple of them will be respected, like B gives C. Sure, right? That's, we still see that here. A gives B, sure. A gives D, yeah, we still see that, right? Well, but now, some things are gonna be lost, notably, DC or CD gives A. We have no table with all three of those in there, right? So, uh, we don't have this functional dependency. So CD gives A. Is not present. Present in table. So, so the answer is no to that question. There we go. SQL time. Assume you're in charge of managing the program committee for an important conference. The following database stores information about papers submitted to the conference. Paper table. Reviews, reviewers on the program committee reviewer table and the assignment of reviewers to papers reviews table. Each reviewer on the program committee will have to review a set of papers. Each paper will be reviewed by. Each paper will be reviewed by some subset of the reviewers. There's our tables. We have PID title. RID name, and then the relational, like the relational table, the relation table. RID PID. So write an SQL query that finds all papers with fewer than three reviewers assigned to them. The output of the query should be a list of paper titles. The results should also include papers without any reviewers assigned to them. Okay, so this is like, you know. Hard, right? This is not easy. Um, so I guess I'll just show that. So. The the first thing I see is that the results should also include papers without any reviewers assigned to them. Okay, so we're gonna have to do an outer join. And SQL only natively supports left outer joins. Right? An outer join is like, it's kind of like a, like you're joining two tables together. On some condition, right? Like over some condition, but it's okay if if uh. It's okay if the left ones, we're doing left outer join. It's okay if some element from the left one has no corresponding match with the. The the right table, it'll still just include it with a null attached to it. With with a null for the like reviewer. And that's, it just, it 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 does exactly this, includes things without any reviewers assigned to it, without any of the other thing assigned to it. So at some point, we're gonna have to do uh re- a paper. Paper. Left. Outer. Join. Rev- reviews. Let's say as R. And I'll say as P here, maybe I'll just move it to the side. As P. And this is going to basically complete this part. The result should include papers without any reviewers assigned to them. That's left outer join. We need to join papers and reviews because we're trying to find papers with a certain number of reviewers, right? So we need to know how many reviewers are associated with each paper, and and so there we go. Okay, so then what are we doing? We we were, you know, let's say from, we gotta use our keywords here, right? So from. That we're selecting. Okay, what are we selecting? Well, we're definitely just like title, right? We certainly just like title here. Because that's the, that's the uh. Finds all the papers, the output of the query should be a list of paper titles, right? And uh, okay, let's just leave like that for now. So then. We're selecting all the titles, but all we've really done here is we've selected all the paper titles, right? Now we need to, you know, we need to go through it, right? Oh, sorry, I guess we need to say aware, right? Because we're joining them. So we need to say where. P dot PID. Equals R dot PID. PID, right? So the the paper ID matches there, right? So we have, we have a match. Okay, so now we need to figure out for each paper, how many reviewers are there? So we need to group by, group by is kind of like collecting. All the uh paper, group, we're gonna group by PID. So for every PID, we're gonna set it into little groups for their respective kind of RIDs, right? The reviewer IDs there. So we're going to group by. PID. Having. And now this condition is going to be applied to each group. Um, so I think we can just say count star. Okay, well, let's just, let's just. Kind of jumping ahead. Having count. Star. Uh greater than, or less than, less than three. Now, I think just for the syntax of SQL, we have to have count star, count. Star here and maybe even here? I think we need to have it in both of those. I'm not really sure why, to be honest, but. That's that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna toss this into Chat G P T. And see if Chat G P T agrees with my solution, because there's so many solutions for this, right? Her solution is different. But. I asked her after, and every time I had a different solution and I asked her if my solution's right, she said, oh, that that also works. So I'm assuming that just it means that there are many ways to solve these questions. This PDF is such a mess. I don't know if I can find. I'm, I know, okay. Okay, no, it's too, it's too much of a mess to read. I can't read this. So. Oh, you know what? I did also. I did also uh like write down some notes here. It's probably hiding the screen, but maybe now you can. No, can you not see again? Oh, you can't see right now? No, maybe. I don't know if it went all black, but it's okay. I'll, I'll, I'll fix it. So. Select title PID from paper as be left outer join. On PID because group by PID tail cannabis and three. Okay, so that's what I said. And then select title. As, okay, yeah, so on- only thing here, can you see my screen again? Is it, did it fix it? No, I don't think you can see it, right? You can't see it. Can I not? If I close this, can you see it now? Okay, you can't see my screen, right? That's like. Zoom is telling me. That you can't see my screen. I'm assuming. We just stop sharing, share again. Oops. Where am I? There I am. Okay, okay, I think you can see now, uh like the same, you can see, you see the the sheet now. Zoom is just telling me weird things. Anyways, so um. Yeah, the only thing that changes based from the solution is the, is like, you know, we just say as count here. And then we do just say count like that, having count. And then you can just return. We don't even need this, actually. Apparently. But I don't know if it would still work. I think, to be honest, there's so many solutions. There's so many ways to write the same SQL query. And I, I mean, they're not like typing it in, verifying that it's syntactically correct, right? They're not, they're not gonna do that. I think they're just gonna make sure that the logic makes sense of what you're doing, and then they'll give you the marks for it. So I don't think it's gonna be very, like, I'm not too worried about fussing over like, should there be count in the thing up here or whatever? Because there are just many solutions. So what are they gonna check? They're not gonna check. They're just gonna make sure like logically makes sense. Yeah, when do we use on instead of where? I think there was some rule like that. I think it doesn't matter, but let's, let's look at the notes or have Chat G P T open, so I'm gonna ask Chat G P T. Uh in SQL. Querying, when do you use the where? Clause. Versus the on clause. Where clause is used to filter rows from the result set based on a specified condition. The on clause is used specifically with join statements to specify the join condition between two tables. Okay, so whenever you use the word join. Then you should say on. So that should be changed. No problem. So. When we say, oops. Is on, right? Uh and that's because of the join, because of using the word join, right? So. Uh let's just, let me just uh. Write that here. Just copying paste from Chat G P T right now, but. So. The where clause. And then the on clause. Uh I'll just use. Maybe make it. Some legible color, red, maybe. And then the on clause. Okay, there we go. That's my answer. I think that's good enough. I think that's correct enough. It matches the solution, but again, she has many, there's many solutions. The solution she did in class is different than the solution in the video. So. Which is different than my solution. My solution, which she said also works. So there's at least three solutions for most of these questions. Um. Uh which which tells me that there are, there are, you know, many solutions for each of these questions, right? So, so yeah. Oh, you know what? I guess I could just like, have it this, let, just as a final, final check here, right? Um for the, let's just like type it in Chat G P T and see what it says. I'm just curious. So for the following. Table. Can I, hopefully I can copy and paste from here. Following table. With the, with the following question. Or maybe answer the following question, I'll say. Answer. The following. Question. So what did it do? It said, this is what Chat G P T did. Select title, P dot title, okay, I guess. From paper P, left outer join. Yeah, left, left join. But I think when you say left join outer is like implied here. I'll just like. Group by PID title, doesn't really matter, right? PID and title, I'm sure there's only this, you probably don't even need that, but anyways. Having count, doesn't matter if you say RID or. Or all columns, it makes no difference, or count is null. Okay, so that's. That's all I guess, that that, so there's no outer, I guess. There's no, didn't use an outer join. But just a- asked if it was null. It's really, it's really the same thing. I, so now I'm gonna type in my solution. I'm gonna see, is this, is this, is this also correct? Um, select title. From, oops. What did I do? I don't know what just happened. My computer just kind of freaked out for a second. But I'm still recording, so that's good. Okay, anyways, I don't know, my computer, I thi- I think I was holding shift and typing things when I shouldn't have been. No, that wouldn't matter. I can hold shift and click a key. Doesn't matter, yeah. Okay, no, my computer just freaked out. As P, left outer join. Reviews as R. On. P dot PID was equals. Probably not say equals, equals, but it equals R dot PID. Group by. PID. Count. It's count. Having. Count less than three. Okay. Outer, I'm spelling outer wrong. My bad. I don't know why. I think it has two Ts. Only one T. It was, it was very happy to notify me of that. There's one T. Uh group by as a space, whatever. The having clause, you need to use. Okay, so apparently I need to use count with a star here, but does that, does that? Go against what she said? Let's see. Yeah, she said you can just say count here. You don't need to say count star. So that's, okay, so that doesn't matter. P, what did I say? Or grouped correctly? Okay, I don't know. It's basically the same thing. It says there's some syntax errors, but it's like I just typed it wrong or something like that. That's, that's all it is. So this is the, I'll just write, I'll just write here, this is the chat G P T answer. Um, I think it's, I think it's still, I think it's still good. I'm, I'm, I'm happy saying it's still good, so there you go. Okay, let's try the next one. So the next one is uh B. So it's that, but I'll also just grab the screenshot of this. Boom. So. So write a SQL query that finds the reviewers with the most papers assigned to them. There can be more than one such reviewer. The output of the query should be a list of reviewer names. A reviewer should be listed if no other reviewer has strictly more papers to review. Okay, so yeah, this kind of looks scary, but it's, uh the last line kind of gives it away, right? How, how we should, how we should actually compute this, right? A reviewer should be listed if no other reviewer has strictly more papers to review. So we need to check if the, for every reviewer, compare it to every reviewer. And make sure that it is at least as big as all of them. So we are gonna do an outer select, right? So the outer select. Is going to be selecting um. Uh names, right? Select name. From. Well, from what? From um. Uh from reviewer. Reviewer joined with reviews. Right? We only need reviewer because, because we need the name. That's all we really need, right? Just say where. Where uh re- oh, I'll say as. As R. Re- views. As, let's say W. So where dub- uh where R dot reviewer has RID, so reviewer dot RID. Equals W dot RID. Okay, then we want to group by. Group by. And we're gonna group by RID, right? So for every RID. Right? Uh I guess we're gonna group by. R dot RID. Oh, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. Yeah, we're gonna group by RID. Right? So what this is doing is like for, it's like for every reviewer, then how many? Things do we have attached to it? And so we want to make sure that. We are having, so this having, remember, is applied to every group. And we want to make sure that count. Uh maybe I have to say count here. Count. As count. Count is greater than or equal to, this is that last line there, uh this line, a reviewer should be listed if no other reviewer has strictly more papers, as in. This reviewer, the, the amount of papers assigned to this reviewer is greater than or equal to all. Of, and then we need a list. List of uh numbers. A list of number. Of numbers, uh amount. Of papers. Per. For each reviewer, for each. Re- viewer. So we gotta get that list, and we're gonna get that list with another select, but it has to be a select for the number. Here we're getting the names with the condition that it's like greater, this is doing that whole thing, but we just need a list of the number of papers associated with each reviewer. So we're gonna do that. And that's gonna go right there, right? So maybe I'll, maybe I'll take this. Right? And. I'll put this kind of like here, maybe I'll change the color to blue. And I'll put this. Here. And I'll just put like a little like star here, and then I'll continue the star, right? And I'll say the star is. Okay, so what are we gonna do? Well, we're gonna select, I want a list of all the number of papers for each reviewers. It's gonna be a very similar thing, right? We're gonna select. But in this time, we're not selecting the names, we're selecting the count. Count. From. Like literally the same thing, right? From R I, uh, from reviewer. As R. Reviews. As W. Where. R dot R I D. Equals W dot, oops, W dot R I D. So the reviewer I D is the same. Having a group by. Group. By. R I D. So grouping by the R I Ds, and then we need to check for each of those groups. Uh, nothing. Count, that's it. I guess I, I guess I'll just say count. As count. I'll just say C, whatever. And then we're gonna return C, and that, that C. Is the same as that C. Select. From reviewer as our one, or as our review, it's a comma, let me just fix that to make it look more like a comma. Reviews as W where the I Ds match, and then group by R I D. Count. As C, and then we, we get the count, and then it's gonna return all those counts. There we go. That's my answer. Let's compare this to the, to the example, you know, in the, uh. Solution. So the solution here is. Um. Okay, yeah, so the solution she wrote down is different than the solution that I did, but I think she, she verified, not I think, but she verified that my solution is also correct. So you can just do it in one. So you can just say. Select name from. Reviews. Group by R I D. Having count. Greater than equal to all. Select count as count. From. Oh yeah, that's true. We don't, we don't need this. We don't need this. Right? We don't need reviewer anymore. I, I'm not asking for the name. The only reason we need reviewer at all is because we're looking for the names. If we only needed the P I Ds, then that would be all that matters, and that is all we need. We just need the P I Ds. So we don't need this at all. We don't need this at all. Any of that. And again, the reason is because we can just group by P I Ds. I don't need the name. I just, and reviews has the P I Ds, right? So, uh, I don't even need, I don't even need that, right? Select just the count. As count. From reviews, group by R I D. Okay, so I, I put a couple extra, like, I put that in there, you know, I, I, I don't know if it's needed, right, but. That's essentially it. So nothing was wrong. That would have worked. It's just unnecessary to have the additional stuff there. Um. And then. As result, and she, she keeps doing stuff. What does she keep doing? She says, as result. Join reviewers. Oh, I just get the name, but that's, you know, necessary. Reviewers that are. Yeah. That's my answer. Hopefully that makes sense. I hope we have something similar, because the first time I looked at these questions, I had no idea. But now that I've just like my third time doing these questions, then, you know, I have an idea of how to do it. Even if it doesn't exactly match the solution, I, again, you know, I verified with her that there are multiple solutions. And I think, I think this is fine. Time is, it's already seven, almost seven thirty, so let, yeah, let's keep going. So let's go to the next one here. Our next one is some more S Q L. I thought this would be faster. But I think I'm. I'm yapping a little bit here. So question five. Refer to the following schema design and answer the queries using S Q L queries. Again, if anybody has any questions, you know. Feel free to stop me and ask. Um, and feel free to, uh. Yeah, that's it. Stop me and ask, you know, or say a message in the chat. Um. Refer to the following schema design and answer the queries using S Q L. There's our schema. Country, politician, head of government, alliance, membership, blah, blah. List the countries in the database where all of the senators are women. So. I think it's a little bit, this is a little bit poorly phrased, because it's like all of the senators, okay? So then. Uh, I would assume that that's like. Uh, the way she solves it is not how I, I just remember the way she solves it is not the way that I interpreted the question. That was the main thing. S P, S P. Um. From, I don't know. So it's like, list the countries. In the database where all of the heads of government. Who are senators. Are women. I don't assume that, I don't assume that the head of govern, the senator is the head of government. Um, I don't know, but that's how she solved the question, so that's how I'm gonna solve the question. She's really like, the, the head of government senators. That's how she, she answered the question. The head of government. Of, I'll just say. Gov. Government like that. Senators are all women. Anyways, the main idea is that you, you know, you want to make sure that they're only women. So the way you do this is you subtract the ones where there is at least one man. In it, right? You know. In this, in this query. So that's the idea. So we have, uh, we're gonna take the, um, countries. That have senators. Sena- doors. Set difference. Countries. That have. At least. One. Male. Senator. And that's gonna be the idea of the question, right? That's how we do it. So how do we do each of these? And how do we do the slash? So the slash is except. In, in S Q L, so you can say except. To do that. And then we need to figure out each of those separate things, right? So let's figure out each of those things here. So this, this first one. Right, this first one is going to be select. Uh, what are we selecting? Well, we're selecting. Uh, what do we want to return? We want to return, I'm assuming, list of country names, C names. So select C name. Uh. Region, yeah. Or you could say country. I'm assuming country and C name are the same thing, right? Because the country is gonna associate with the, the name like that, and P name is P name. So it doesn't really matter, whatever. We'll select something, but I'll decide what to select in a second. From. Okay, from what? Well, we are countries that have senators. So from, um. Yeah, so we need to mix, again, because of this assumption about head of government, if. Uh, me just reading this question, I would never include head of government. I would just say, uh, from politicians. Or. Country. Oh no, but I guess you do need head of government for the country name, because otherwise you don't know what country this politician is for. So maybe that's why you have it? Okay, so you, I guess you do need it. Oh no, but head of government. I feel like politician should have a country. Attribute. Well, it's region, but I, I don't know, that's, we don't. It's, it's just like some kind of, that could be the region they're born in or something like that, you know, we don't know. Hey, it's just to kind of match with the solution that she wrote. They, this is how we do it. So we, we say head. Of. I'll just say G O V. T. As H, and we want to join this with politician. As P, just to give it a name. And what are we gonna do this with, with this? We're going to select from these two. We're gonna join politician and head of government together. Uh, we need to say where. Where. Right, uh, H dot country. No, H dot P name. Equals H, uh, P. P dot. P name. And. Right, and so what are we actually looking for? We just found, okay, we found all the politi, uh, all the countries with their associated politicians. Uh, who are head of government, I guess. The head of government thing is kind of confusing. I think it's just like, the, the head of government is on a way to associate. A politician with a country. That's, that's the, that's the point of head of government. I don't think it actually means like president. It just means like. Head of, could be like the head of like the municipal government or something like that, I guess. I don't know. It's just, that's just the semantics of the question. Anyways, uh, head of government. We need to figure out the people who have senators. That's what we're looking for, right? And so we would need to make sure that P dot office. Equals senator. And so we found all of the. Countries that have senators. Regardless of gender here. We want to accept. And now we're gonna write the second one. Countries that have at least one male senator. It's going to be identical to this query. Right, identical to this query. But we're gonna put another condition. We're gonna put another condition. This is two. And our other condition. Maybe I'll just put this down here, right? We have not just a senator, we're not looking for just senators, we're looking for senators. That are male. P dot. Gender. Equals. Mail. There you go. And that's our. That is our query. So we're doing this essentially, countries that have senators minus countries that have at least one male senator, and that's gonna, you know, essentially find all the. Countries that only have female senators. Okay, I will keep going unless someone stops me. So the next one. Is list the countries in the database that are in NATO. Oh, so if you put a select country, right? Oh, yeah, 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 right? So we're selecting, yeah, what are we selecting? We're selecting, um, uh, H. Doesn't really matter, but I guess we could just say H dot country. Or you could just, there's only one country, right? So you could say country, yeah. There we go. I agree. Yes, thank you. List the gover, uh, list the countries in the database that are in NATO and have had a female head of government. Again, the phrasing is super weird here, but. Have a female head of government. Essentially, is what's being said here, right? So, uh, yeah, okay, so let's, let's start with this. So let's see what we need to connect, right? We need to connect. Countries, their alliance, and head of gender, right? We need gender. We need alliance. To connect alliance with gender, we're gonna need to collect, connect alliance with country. And then we're gonna need to connect, use head of government to connect country with P name. So we need all three of these, right? We need. There's also. No, but the, but country doesn't have anything to do with, uh. Politician. I really think the P name should be in country. I think that makes a lot more sense. That's the whole confusion with the head of government, I think. But anyways. These three are the three we need to connect, because alliance connects with head of government, which connects with politician. So we're gonna do that. I guess I'll just do it on the next page. Just move this down a little bit, right? So. Uh, we're going to select. Select what? Uh, I don't know. We'll figure it out in a second. But then I need to connect, like I said, right? Alliance. Membership, I think it was called. Why don't I bring this down? Um, alliance membership. As A. Join that with head. Of. Government. As H, join that with politician. As P, okay, where. And we just need to make sure that all these things are, are right. So like A dot country. Equals, uh, H dot country. And. H dot P name. Equals P dot P. Right, and that's, that's all of our joins there, right? That we have like, that we've joined everything correctly essentially, right? Now we need to do what actually says. NATO is the alliance. So I'll say and. Alliance, uh, A dot, I always need to say A dot, but I'm just gonna do it anyways. A dot alliance. Equals NATO. And. Female head of government. And. Head of government equals female. I mean, uh, H, H dot gender equals. Equals, equals female. The have had is a weird way to phrase this, but have a female head of government. I'm assuming it doesn't really tell us what the head of government table actually keeps track of, so it actually keeps track of all even previous heads of government. Not just current. But yeah. And then selecting here, what are we selecting? Well, we're just gonna select, uh, we're just gonna select country. Right? You could say, I guess you have to specify A dot country. There we go. Actually, she doesn't even say this in the solution, but you have to put that, I think, so that's the, that's, oops, that's that. What's happening? Why isn't that? Oh, I lost the, I lost the dot. Okay. That's my solution for that question. So that's all the S Q L. Not too crazy. This is definitely the hardest one. Maybe actually. This one could also be the hardest one. The double select, right? The double select is, is tough. To know when you have to do that. I, you know.
Uh, quick question.
Yes, Andre, what's up?
Um, from the previous question of A.
Yes.
Uh, why did you, why? Why did you like just, um. Wouldn't it be easier to do like P dot gender equal to female?
Uh, I did, uh. Oh, P dot gender equals female. Yeah, so if you just do that, then you're finding all the countries who have a female senator. Like if you just did one select and you said where. The, where gender equals female, then you're, you're finding all the countries where at least one senator is female. But that's not what we want. We don't want at least one senator. We want all of the senators are women. Right? So to do that, we can do kind of the opposite. We can find countries that have at least one senator. And countries that have at least one male senator and kind of like subtract them. And you find what's left there. So that, that's, that's the thing. It's hard to like, it's hard to like count, you know? There might be a way to do with like group by and like count, but it's a harder solution.
So quick question.
Yeah.
Um, so if it was like, uh. Uh, how would I phrase this? The center, uh, there can be one male. Right?
Yeah.
So. Would it, would you do the same process except for you would do an and, and then you would also. Include.
Yeah.
The situation where there's one male senator?
Yeah, so yeah, I mean, I, I guess I would do that, right? I'd add, I'd like, I'd take the union with, uh, the, I'd like do this. And I'd do a union with another query entirely, which is like that there is at least, no, that there is exactly one male senator.
Okay. Wait, so the union would happen as like its own separate query, or, or whether.
Yeah.
Between the query after the accept.
No, I would take like, so if the, if, so if the, if the question is, list the countries in the database where all of the senators are women, or. There is exactly one male senator. Then I would do this query and then the whole thing, and then union, and then a separate query that's find the countries where there is exactly one male senator.
Okay, well, no, because like, uh, she usually does like something like this, or let's say like students, uh, like taking courses or whatever, and I think it's like. Also applicable if you think of it in that sense, right?
Yeah, sure, yeah. Right, and, and then I think you'd solve it with the union in that way, if you had another, like you'd have to like.
Yeah.
Uh, or there might be just a way to say have an or. Uh or there might be just a way to say have an or in your, in your uh. Well, I missed the, missed the W from here, but in you for have an or in your where or have an or in your having when you group by or something like that. There might also be a way. I'm sure there's many, many solutions to these questions. But yeah, okay. So that's that. Let's do the DTD stuff now. So the DTD stuff, right? So you know, just to overview here of what this all means, right? So uh. XML is a, a no SQL type. Database. It's like document type, so you have everything in a big document, and this is good for moving things, data transfer, right? It's nice to have everything in these files. You can just move around. It's good for data transfer. Um and we, XML in general is just like these open and closed tags. Barely any syntax. DTD is another layer of syntax. That you put on top of your XML to restrict it to be a certain kind of thing so that it's, you know, a little bit easier to read for the reader and stuff like that. And it's like syntax you put at the start of your XML and then it describes the XML data after. The DTD has no data in it. It's just like the signatures essentially for each out type of element. Um so this is the DTD given to us and then it says write an X path expression to find all courses that have at least twenty students. So X path is a syntax to search through DTD documents. Probably just exit, probably just to search through XML documents since it's called X path. Um but we're using it to search through DTD documents. Or or or, you know, XML, XML files that were written uh with the DTD uh like type. There's other types of XML other than DTD. Um but I'm, I I don't think that's on the, like, there was another type we learned XX, XML schema or something like that. Uh but I am not spending any time learning that. I don't know if that's on the test. I just kind of just hoping not. Why is this glitching around so much? I'll just make it smaller, I guess. It just doesn't like that it goes off the screen. Anyways, so let's try to answer this question here, right? Maybe I'll actually move that. We'll actually move this up. Here, we can just do it on the side. So there it is, and then I'll just, you know what, I'll just take. There we go. So. To write the X path expression, right? We're looking for all the courses that have at least twenty students. So first of all, um if I do, if I, if I write slash slash course. My understanding. Is that this is gonna find all the courses. Period. This is gonna search for through anything, any element labeled course, slash slash course. Okay, so course. Okay. Um then, but I don't want any every course. I use square brackets to indicate a condition. And that condition depends either on the attributes. So that would be the attribute list here or the sub elements, right? It could be some sort of sub element of the class. In this case, it's it's an attribute, right? So when I, when it's an attribute, I use this little at sign to mean attribute and I take number and R S two, S like students. And I want to make sure that this is, you know, greater than equal to twenty. And that's it. It's relatively simple, but you know, when I first read DTD documents, like when the, we had the lecture of DTD. Totally alien language. I had no idea what was happening. Slowly, I kind of pieced it together, but uh that's the idea of this one. Write an X path expression to list all professors at the school. So again, we want to slash slash, let's look at where we find professors, right? So teacher probably with a title that is PC data, right? So we're gonna say slash slash teacher and it's gonna find every element called teacher. And we want to make sure that uh the title. Equals professor. Like that. Teacher title equals professor. Um we don't use the at sign because it's not an attribute anymore. It's an L, a sub element of teacher. Every teacher is associated with that little star means zero or more titles, right? So it could, you know, you could be professor, dean, whatever. You have lots of titles. So that's the idea of that. It's gonna, you know, check with the solutions, yeah. So pro- the professor does like teachers slash teacher. I asked her, she said, you don't need to do that. I don't know why she does it, so anyways. That's that. The next one's the killer. And the next one's the, the really hard one. So let's take a look. Move this down a little bit. Uh no, that's actually not helpful. I will just. Okay, you know what? I'll just put this here. Find all the rooms that are used on Mondays. So we need to find the rooms that are used on a specific time. So let's start with rooms. You know, we need to find certain rooms. So there's our rooms. And it has no information in it about when it's being used, right? It just has the name, which is an ID and a number of seats. Okay, so not good so far. How do we figure out when it's being used? Well, let's find when it's being used there. Day. Class. There's a specific class happening at a specific day. And it's in a course. With a spec- oh, what's happening? Where is it? Uh with a specific teacher. There you go. And that teacher has a specific room ID. So we need to find rooms in which there are teachers that teach on Mondays. And we need to find teachers who ha- and to do that, we need to find teachers that have a class on Mondays. So there's kind of like. Couple steps. I'll write it in English first, right? So rooms. Where, you know. We're gonna look for, we're gonna, you know, search for all the rooms, right? We're gonna search for everything called a room. Capital R room. Such that there is some. Some. Teacher. That. Te- teaches. On Monday. In that room. And to do that. We need to make sure, so the way we're gonna write that is we're gonna say room. Such that it's ID, so rooms have an attribute called ID. ID. Is equal to, and now we need to figure out all the IDs, right? The room ID. We need to figure out, let me think about this for a second. The. IDs of the rooms. Match with the room IDs of the teachers, but not any teacher, just teachers that have classes on Mondays. So the ID has to match. Let me see the solution here. Yeah, yeah. So we're gonna find the ID of teachers. Who teach. On Monday. And we're gonna get their, we're gonna get their room. Attribute. You see how the teachers, teacher has a room attribute? So we want to make sure that the ID of the room that we're getting is equal to the the ID of, you know, uh teachers who teach on Monday. Their room ID. Okay, well, now we have to find the teachers who teach on Monday. I am looking at the solution for this. This would be tricky, right? So we need to find the teachers who teach on Mondays. Okay, so we have room. At ID. Equals, I'm gonna switch to a different color, just to kind of compartmentalize it. Now we need to find any teacher. But not just any teacher. Teachers whose IDs. Teachers have an ID, match with a course. That has a class on Monday. Teacher, right? So we're gonna see ID equals course. That has a Monday class. And we're gonna get their teacher. ID. And we're gonna at, I'm gonna run out of rooms, so I'm gonna say at room that. Next line I'll write smaller. We're gonna at room that. So let me change the color of this text. So we're finding the teachers who have IDs that match with courses that have a class on Monday. So now. To do that inner one. We need to make, we need to find the courses that have a class on Monday. Okay, I'm just gonna write smaller for the next line here. So. Room. At ID. Equals. Teacher. At ID. Equals, okay, now, we need to find courses, uh no, I'm sorry, we need to find courses. So we need to find the courses, so we need to find slash slash course. Right? Looking at the table here, right? We have course, but not any course. And you know, we're gonna do some condition here. At the end of the condition, we're gonna get the um teacher ID. Right? We're gonna get teacher and that's the ID we're checking. Um but not any course, only courses. That have a class, so we can just say that they're class. And now the class has an attribute, so we use the at sign. That their day is equal to Monday. We want to get the IDs, the teacher IDs for these classes. And we need to get like, we're a little too small. Now I have way, way too much room. And we need to get the room IDs for that. And that's our final answer. So it's like a triple nesting, right? We're looking for, you know, almost quadruple nesting, right? Yeah, pretty much a quadruple nesting here because courses have classes as a sub element, but that one's, that last step is pretty easy because every course has a class. But anyways. That's our final answer. So hopefully. Hopefully it makes a little bit of sense. I'm gonna grab that and I'm gonna put that, I'm just gonna highlight that there. That's that. So hopefully compartmentalizing it into those little parts, it made it a little bit easier to see what's going on, but it really, we had to do a three, three time. Nesting of these X path things. Could I do that without? Her showing it first in the, in the, in the tutorial? No, I could not.
Part marks, baby, part marks.
Part marks. That's what we need. Um okay, but that's that question and that's all of the uh, that's all of the uh. Question six. Still have question seven, so we'll talk about question seven, but let me just, one second here, let me just send a message here. Okay, so let's uh. Let's do this last question, question seven. So question seven here, it says. Using DTD, provide two alternative designs in a document oriented database for the following schema. Must be document oriented, that's just how it is. Um for each design, provide two queries that can be efficiently answered by one design. But not that efficiently, not that efficiently by another design. So we need the DTD design here, right? So it's gonna be similar to this, so ideally, we get one of these on the test and then we can kind of just like. Copy the the syntax here, right? That's what she did, you know, she she, when she was solving the question on the board, she is or on the projector, whatever. She did a, she did that. So uh we have student, course and enrollment. Student and course are the main entities and the enrollment is essentially the relation between the two. Or the relationship between the two. So. Now, to, to turn this into a DTD document, we just choose like a focal point, right? So let's say I'm gonna choose student to be my focal point. I I have to have the syntax, I don't remember the syntax at all, but. So we have the doc type, you first declare the doc type. Hog, oops. Hogwarts? Oh, not Hogwarts, sorry, I'm reading the thing. Student, right? Or, yeah, student, right? Or we could just call it like. We just call it. Enrollment, enrollment, I guess, right? Enrollment, right, which is the connection between the things. Um and yeah, the syntax is already wrong. So that looks like that and that looks like that. So that, this is how we start. A DTD document, like you say doc type and you give it an overall header name essentially. And within that, and you give it a, the first element, which is the same name as the uh, as the, as the type. So element. Uh and this is going to be uh enrollment. Enrollment and we need to give it some, some descriptions here, right? So the enrollment. Maybe scroll here, let's see what. Okay, she called it university, so it doesn't have to be the name of the thing, so why don't we? Because maybe enrollment will be a separate type, right? So let's call it just university, just the top level. University. And what does the university have? Uh a university has, uh yeah, so this is, this is where you you choose the focus you're taking, right? So are you taking a student focused approach or a course focused approach? So let's take the student focused approach, right? Right? The student focused approach and and now we think to ourselves, is there just one student? Yeah, there are many students, so you indicate to to DTD what it is. So if you want to put, you know, one or more, it's a plus, or if you want to put zero or more, it's a star, I think. Let's check that. Plus is one or more, star is zero or more. So whatever, the zero or more students. Okay, but what's the student? Well, you have to indicate to it what a student is, so you again declare, oh, you have to, you know, close this. You have to indicate to it what a student is, so that's another element, right? Element. Student. And what does a student have, right? A student has an SID, an S name. Uh an S name. And uh, you know, phone, I'll just say phone, phone for phone number, right? Uh and we'll, we'll talk about more in a second. That's what it has, right? And then we have to declare what these things are, right? So we can just say, you know, element. I won't write all of them, but I'll just say the first one, element, um SID, right? Is just PC data, right? It's just a, it's just a, like a string. Like that. And you copy this for all of them, right? So you just say, so SID, then you have S name. Then you have. Phone. These are all PC data, right? So you have S name. S name. And you have phone. Then those are all PC data, meaning just like things, right? Okay, so we have our students involved. Now we also need courses, right? So we have a, an element called a course. Like that, right? Um but I guess before we even do, well, I need the element, but before we even do courses, you know, I guess the thing is, I, probably a good approach to take is like connecting it. So we connected, we started with the university and we connected that to many students. Okay, but now students enroll in a course, so really enrollment. Okay, but now students enroll in a course, so really enrollment is the next thing. And that's a, that's something that a student has, right? They have an enrollment. Enrollment, and they can have, you know, many, zero or many enrollments here, like that, right? So enrollment is another type of element that we have, and enrollments have, well, what does it say? It says it has an enrollment ID. They have an SID. They have, well, okay, hold on, do we need all those things? No, we don't need an SID, because the enrollment is associated with a student, right? That's why, so we don't need an SID. We do need a course ID. We do need a term. We do need a grade. Check this. Course, term, grade, no enrollment ID. Okay. I don't know why, but no enrollment ID is needed. Maybe the enrollment ID is just, is just like the, is like it's the primary key, it doesn't actually have any meaning, meaning. And then we need the same thing here, right? We need, uh, CID. Same stuff, right? We need this same thing to just, to give it all, to say that it's all PC data. So it's a CID, we have a term, we have a grade. Like that. Okay, and uh, yeah, sorry, not CID, but it enrolls in a course, right? So I guess we don't need the enrollment ID, because the point of the enrollment ID is like the, is the exact entry in the table, the connection. But we don't have those kind of connections anymore. We have like nesting, right? So a student has enrollments, enrollments have courses, a single course, right? Enrollments just have a single course like that. So, yeah, that's all. So then we ju- we don't even need, uh, well, we will need CID, but we don't need it yet, right? We just need, just need this. So nesting is really the important thing. So you have course, okay, so then we have to declare what a course is, right? So I'll just put this here. So then a course element course, or capital C course. What's a course? Well, a course has, uh, description and references. Description. Well, I guess it has a CID, right? Yeah, it has a CID. Has a CID. It has a description, I'll just say description, and references. So we need the CID. We also need the description and the references. So we have the description and the references, and then we close it, and that is it, essentially. That's, that's our whole thing, right? So universities have students, students have enrollments, enrollments have a one course associated with it, and courses have these kind of things. So it's this nesting of information, that's the main thing here. And you know, this was student centric. Centric, how do you say, centered? Um, and then the next one, which is very similar, so we're not gonna type the whole thing, but like, it's gonna be course centered. And it's gonna be essentially the same thing, because the question says do two, right? Do two different designs. And so we do course centered, can I use arrow keys here? How much more space do I need? Description, refs. Okay, I'll, I'll, yeah, I'll put it there and then I'll just move this. Sorry, it's a little, you know, a little messy, but just want it all on one page here. Probably move things around. Just draw a little arrow or line here, right? So that's, now it's core centered, so I guess this can move down by one. There we go, right? So for course centered, we don't have a list of students as like a kind of our top level. We have a list of courses. So there's no solution for this, I'm gonna have to be careful, right? There's a list of courses, so I'm gonna jump around a little bit here. So list of courses. What's a course? A course has a course ID, a description, references, and it has a list of students. Right? It has a list of students. A student then doesn't really have a list of enrollments, since that's not the nesting, right? They just have an SID and a phone like that. And or they have a list of enrollments, right? Yeah, yeah. They have a list of enrollments. Courses have a list of enrollments, because I completely just ignored enrollments, enrollments, right? And those enrollments, instead of having a course associated with it, they have a student associated with it. Very, really changed very little here. I made the university course centric, so there's the course at the start. Like, that's the first thing we see. What are courses? Courses are course IDs, descriptions, references, and lists of enrollments. What's enrollment? It's a student, a term, and a grade. What's a student? An SID, a name, and a phone number. So we just kind of changed the focus, but it's really the same thing, it's just kind of different. So what's better for what? Well, we talked about in the lecture, but it's just like, if you have queries about students, like, oh, oh, what is the average grade of the student? This would be better. If it's like about courses, what is the average grade in this course? This would be better. Depends on how focused your SQL statements, like your your queries are. Okay, guys, well, that is the entire practice test. Uh, we really did everything here, so it's also eight o'clock, so I think that's pretty much our, you know, wrap up time for today. You know, I thought, I thought this would be much faster to this exam, but I think, I think it was good. We, we did discuss everything pretty thoroughly, so that's, so that's good. There's definitely no XSLT, so someone's asking just to make sure, I think it'll be DTD format, probably not something else, no XSLT. So there's definitely no XSLT, she confirmed that. There's definitely no Java, she confirmed that. I didn't ask, I meant to ask, I didn't ask if there's any X schema, but considering there's only a few slides on it, and you know, she talked pretty thoroughly about it in the review that it's doing DTD. I'm just gonna, I really hope it's just DTD. I think it's just DTD. Uh, I might look at the X schema a little bit, or I maybe just email her. It's the weekend now, so she's gonna respond, but anyways, I could, yeah, I'll just email. And, uh, but yeah, so that's, that's, that's that. Okay, guys, well, wrap it up now, so I will just, uh, stop recording.